Meeting of the I'm going to call this meeting in the urban flood safety, water quality district board to order. It's August 15th, mentioned it's 2:34. So, welcome, everybody. First order of business, we're going to do roll call. Wendy?
Nancy Hendrickson said she was coming, but I don't see her. Steve Fancher.
Here.
Eric Mueller.
Here.
Dave Ripma also indicated he was coming. John Yama did not indicate he was not coming. Charlie Craddock.
President.
Lori Stegman indicated she's not able to come. Ann Grabot will join us at 3:00. Corky Collier. James Allison said he was not able to make it. Mary Helen Kincaid, I expect to join us. Annie Stephenson is not able to make it. Eric Molander.
Erica's here.
Is muted. I see him. Janelle Bell. I have not heard from Ed Washington.
Here.
Bob Salinger. Not heard from Bob. And you said Nancy joined us? Great. And Dave. So, the only one missing is Mary Helen.
I'm happy to follow up with her individually, too. Well, excellent. This is an exciting meeting. We get to dive into the equity program. I'm going to turn it over to Jim to start that.
What I want to do on behalf of all of you is introduce Rahi Reddy, who, at least on my screen, is in the upper left. And Rahi is the DEI Program Director for Metro. And she'll be giving you some perspective on some of the successes and challenges that Metro has faced. And most importantly, on some of the things that Metro has done that have had the biggest impact on outcomes in our community. We also have with us Amber Ontiveros, who you all have met on a couple of occasions. And Amber's going to share some of the work she's done with Trinet and BART, I believe, the Bay Area Rapid Transit System, and incorporating equity into some strategic policymaking that resulted in broader public support for investment in systems that the community benefits from. I think it would be thoughtful for Rahi if each of you here could just give a very quick name and who you represent on the board. And for the staff who are on, let's just really briefly name and title in a word or two about your focus. And that way Rahi knows who she's talking to today. Why don't we start with board members, Mr. Chair?
Hello, Rahi. I'm Steve Fancher, the Board Chair, and I also work for the City of Gresham.
Eric?
Hi, my name is Eric Molander, and I am on, oops, sorry, wrong Eric.
That's okay.
Keep going.
Keep going.
And I'm the member that represents the owners in the flood district.
Eric?
The other Eric. I'm the City of Fairview representative, and my day job is I'm the Finance Director for the City of Troutdale.
Corky Collier.
There's only one Corky.
You may know Rahi already from, I don't know.
And so I'm Corky Collier with Columbia Corridor Association, and I represent the Multnomah County Drainage District on this board.
You know, Councillor Craddock. Let's go to Dave. Do you want to, Dave Ripma? Introduce yourself.
I'm Dave Ripma, and I'm a city councillor in Troutdale and representing Troutdale on the board. By the way, you folks in the meeting room, I can hardly hear you, especially Eric. I don't know where the mic is, but I can hardly hear you.
So, people in the room, grab a microphone when you're speaking and hold it up close to your face. And we're working on microphone technology and so on as we speak. So, thank you, Dave, for letting us know. I appreciate it. Mr. Washington, I think you know Rahi.
Yes, I do. And I'm a representative of a non, on the board, representative of nonprofit with expertise or interests related to the managed floodplain and that organization just happens to be the Vanport Mosaic Project.
Okay, Nancy?
Okay, so yeah, I'm Nancy Hendrickson. I'm representing the City of Portland on this group. And I work for BES within the City of Portland on watershed operations and maintenance.
Okay, we'll do staff in the room really quickly, starting with Evan Mitchell.
Hi, Evan Mitchell, Public Affairs and Communications for the Drainage District and the flood safety water quality district.
Okay, Carrie?
Carrie Simon. I manage the environmental program in Multnomah County Drainage District and also our planning department.
Emily?
I'm Emily Robertson. I'm the transition engineer at the district. I'm Emily Robertson. I'm the transition manager.
Okay, Bill Owen.
Very good afternoon, Bill Owen. I'm the Chief Engineer at the district. We're seeing engineering operations. Nice to meet you.
Aster?
Hi, I'm Aster Molten. I'm the Public Affairs and Community Relations Specialist with the Drainage District.
Bailey?
Everyone, my name is Bailey, and I am the Communications and Outreach Intern.
Hong?
Hello, this is Hong. Sorry, my camera is not working. I am the District Council for MCD and all the other districts.
Marielle?
Hi, Rahi. It's me, Marielle. We know each other.
You know each other. Okay, that's perfect. And Amber, do you want to introduce yourself? I think you know everybody, but.
Hi, Rahi. It's good to see you.
And there's somebody with an S.
We have Sarah O'Brien.
Sarah, you want to say hello?
Hi, friends. I'm going to stay off camera, too. I'm recovering from a migraine. Sarah O'Brien with Partnership. We're working with the Echo Northwest team that's helping support the team with a revenue strategy. Just listening in today.
And Wendy?
Hi, everyone. I'm Wendy Lynn. I'm the Board Coordinator.
I think we got everyone. Thank you for going through that, Rahi. Thank you for asking, so you know who you're talking to. I have just a few brief introductory slides, and then I'm going to turn it over to Rahi and Amber. Coming up. So, as you recall, we are working through a series of presentations for you all to help us develop some revenue scenarios for your consideration this fall, ultimately for release for public comment and ultimate board decision making sometime in the winter, where we'll get a revenue model in place. Last time we spoke to you, we gave you the background about why we're taking this approach, and we covered flood safety and the environment. Today, we're going to talk about equity and give you the staff's current best thinking about the types of strategies we want to incorporate into the revenue scenarios that we will present to you in the fall. So, that's why we're here. I want to remind you that your job as the initial board is the big picture and to get the broad strokes of a revenue measure in place. And that once we have that revenue, staff will be able to do the detailed planning and CIP development. And ultimately, the elected board will be making appropriations for specific program areas. Okay, next slide. So, what we're going to cover today is the things that the current legacy districts are doing and some of the gaps that we know of. And then Rahi and Amber will talk a little bit about best practices in the industry and things that other agencies are doing, both in Portland, greater Portland region, but also nationally. And then we will talk a little bit, or I'm going to talk a little bit about the areas that I'm going to be recommending to you this fall that we focus on for equity. And then we'll go into a board discussion, and we'll close with a quick conversation about adopting the equity framework. And just a reminder, we're hoping to get your comments today on that, if you haven't provided them. And if you need more time, let us know. So, that's what we're going to cover today. Next slide. So, just to remind you that we are building on a fair amount of good work that has happened via the team here, your staff team at MCD and the MCD Board's leadership asking, they've adopted an equity strategy and an equity policy, and they've directed your staff a couple of years ago, I think, maybe a year and a half ago, to come up with an equity action plan that is both agency-wide and department-specific. And they had created the beginnings of the framework that you were currently considering before I arrived. And we are building on that and trying to get it across the finish line with approval. So, that's something that we're doing. In addition, we are about to finish up a pay equity study under the Oregon Pay Equity Act to ensure that, like jobs are getting paid equitably and evenly, we will see some adjustments among our classifications and within classifications result to that study. It also gives us an opportunity to compare how we're doing with other local agencies and statewide agencies to ensure that we're competitive in the marketplace. But fundamentally, what we want to make sure of is that people with like skills doing like work are paid equitably. We're almost done with that. You've all met Amber Ontiveros. We have retained Ontiveros and Associates as an expert equity advisor. And Amber and her firm are helping us in all aspects of this work. We've also done some work with the Columbia Slough Watershed Council to really reach out to underserved communities with flood risk education programs. And that's been really fun and I think really effective, and is probably a model that you'll be hearing more about as we move forward. We also have a very small sponsorship program across the legacy districts. I think the total spending in the current fiscal year is contemplated to be less than $30,000. But staff has developed, under the administrative authority delegated to us, some criteria to use that drive us more towards working with underserved communities through that sponsorship program. And we look forward actually to the urban board establishing a larger sponsorship program that would probably have more board and community involvement in setting the guardrails and the selection process for those sponsorship programs. We also worked with some community liaisons on the board and Oregon Kitchen Table, who you may know does a lot of community engagement and survey work. And through that, we really did some intensive work, working with underserved communities in the floodplain to identify needs and desires and work that we could do to advance equity across the floodplain. We've recently acquired translation and interpretation service contracts, so we have flexible services contracts in place. So, whenever we need translation or interpretation, either ASL or other foreign language, we are prepared to do that. We have done a series of staff trainings to both look at sexual harassment, about gender, about equity generally. And we're going to continue to run a series of mandatory exposures to staff to help us broaden our thinking and ensure we're staying current with best practices. We've also made some changes to our recruitment program. So, for example, we're minimizing the requirements for college degrees and looking for any amount of skills and experience that allows someone to be successful in the job. I do want to stress that we have some requirements for engineers, and they do need to have a PE. And we have a lawyer who needs to have a JD and so on. So, it's not true for every position. But essentially, what we're attempting to do with our recruitment is ensure that our staff looks a lot more like the district that we serve and the demographics of the district that we serve. And we've had some successes already, and what we really want is the best qualified people in the door. And oftentimes, when you think a little bit differently, it doesn't require a college degree. Similarly, we have a whole variety of things that we do, both on procurement and accessibility to comply with federal and state laws. So, for example, that's part of our translation and interpretation services, and we're evaluating our websites for visibility and accessibility, and again, wage and hour, and all those things that we do on a daily basis that we work on. Similarly, we have an adopted cultural resource management plan. For those of you who are unaware, this area was widely used by indigenous people. And when you're moving earth around, you can sometimes encounter artifacts, or you may even find something that's above ground, like an old building that is a historic or cultural resource. And so, in order to comply with federal law about protecting those things, we have a whole manual that we developed quite a while ago, but it's in regular use by the people who are out there moving dirt around to ensure that if we encounter an object that we handle it carefully and respectfully. Often, that means actually keeping the finding confidential so that the area doesn't get looted or otherwise disturbed. And then we did do some ethno-history research, and that was presented to you last summer. We had a person affiliated with Portland State University and the Grand Ron Tribe do a fairly detailed survey of the history of the region. Those are some highlights. There's other work that's been done, but it's all informing the work that we're doing today. Next slide. Okay, some of the gaps that I know of, just from having worked at Metro and Trinet and the City of Portland and doing some literature reviews and talking with Amber and others, we currently don't have specific procurement framework that provides incentives or reduces barriers for small emerging or minority-owned firms. The state of Oregon has a COBID program, and I'm not going to remember what that stands for. Rahi, maybe you recall. But we've also just started our new Director of Finance and Administration, who has direct experience at a local special district, creating some procurement rules that improved the diversity of the folks that her former agency works with. So, we're excited to bring that onboard in the next year or two. I already talked a little bit about staff recruitment and retention, but what we really want to do is make sure that our environment through the staff trainings and the leadership work that the management team is doing, that our place is safe and welcoming for all kinds of different people. And we're taking steps every day to help all of us recognize that a more diverse team makes us a stronger team and a smarter team and a more effective team. Recruitment-wise, we are broadening the people that we reach out to, and we're excited through some of the work that we're doing through partnerships, which is the next bullet, to really build stronger relationships with organizations that have diverse membership or diverse services, so that we can bring more people into our agency, let them know the great work and the great jobs that you can get here and the community benefit that's created. So, we want to really broaden our relationships and partnerships, particularly with agencies that serve by communities, because we think that's one of the best ways for them to get to know who we are and the great opportunities that exist here for employment. And then, we also know that we're missing sort of a lens of prioritizing vulnerable populations. And I want to stress that, you know, we do have issues with homeless. Our homeless program is really focused on being able to access and maintain and operate our infrastructure, not solving the homelessness issue. But for example, for Fox Run and other low-income areas in our community and folks that we don't hear from typically in some of the decision-making, we know that we have not prioritized those populations in the past. So, that's a significant gap for us, and we're interested in filling that gap with some of the actions that we'll talk about in a few minutes. Next slide. Thank you, Ben, for describing. COBID stands for Certification Office of Business Inclusion and Diversity. So, what I'd like to do now, and again, if you guys have questions, we may have time at the end for you to bring them up, or if you could put them in the chat or email them, I think it will be more efficient. I want to remind you, we have some legislators coming later today, and we want to be ready for their arrival and also give you guys plenty of time to talk through at the end of this presentation. So, for now, what I'd like to do is turn it over to Rahi and then to Amber. And as I mentioned, they're going to talk about some of the things that they know of that are best practices, things that really made a difference. And the objective here is to demonstrate that other agencies are out front of us and doing some really good work, and we can learn from them. So, I'm really grateful to have Rahi here today with all of her expertise and Amber as well. And I think we'll start with Rahi, unless there's a burning question from one of you that we need to answer in order for you to really listen to Rahi and Amber. Okay, Rahi, thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Hi, everybody. Again, my name is Rahi Reddy. I use she and her pronouns, and I'm the Director of Diversity Equity Inclusion Program at Metro. I've just celebrated my five years at Metro, which I can't believe it. It's like flown by. A little bit of background about me, I actually first really started working with Metro as a community member, representing Asian Pacific Islander Network of Oregon, Apono, on the, at that time, the Division Project, you know, with Councillor Craddock and Councillor Bob Stacy, working on the whole kind of reimagining of like Bus Rapid Transit and all of this, you know, potential impact for our communities, especially in the Jade District in the City of Portland. So, I got to first build my relationship with Metro through connection and working closely with Metro staff and leaders and thinking about how we could bring like real solid, direct improvements to the lives of Portlanders in our region, especially those who are transit-dependent and had a lot of kind of really imagination and ideas of how transit could actually have greater impacts beyond just getting the buses to run on time, but to improve affordable housing. And every day, I live right near the Jade District, every day I get to see the investments Metro made of creating, you know, affordable housing and a community-centered space for Asian Pacific Islander communities right here at 82nd and Division. And every time I walk by that building, I think, oh, my gosh, like it really started with that first relationship with a government agency who was beginning and working on its journey around racial equity and has now delivered such direct impacts to my community. So, I come to it from all sides of that equation. And today, you know, I'm not doing a PowerPoint. This is not a training. This is just a conversation among fellow good-doers in government who are trying to do good things to talk a little bit about what have we learned from Metro's journey around racial equity and the work we've been doing. And to share with you, I think, some like key things I would want to offer to you to think about as like where are the centers of gravity that maybe a district like yours would want to focus on. So, we start the journey really with, I think, probably the most impactful best practice that Metro did and really with Councillor Craddock, with the history and leadership of, you know, Councillor Washington, really to have Metro have a guiding plan to invest in community through our strategic plan to advance racial equity, diversity, and inclusion. This was a plan that has goals and action items for the, for the agency to meet in order to deliver on these values of investing in communities and building racial equity in the region. And this plan was adopted by Metro Council in 2016, but essentially was being worked on through collaboration with community over at least two years. But the goal of this plan was really, how do we get Metro on this journey looking across all the different areas of work that Metro operates in? And so, I bring up this plan because there are a lot of agencies that don't have a strategic plan like this that helps unify across areas of work, across departments, bureaus, whatever you want to call them, and make sure we're all kind of moving forward with some basic common understanding of what we're trying to deliver around equity in the region. This strategic plan was adopted in 2016 and became the centerpiece of how we start to build our work in a systematic way in the agency to deliver on equity. From the strategic plan, it really also called on each department and venue to develop its own racial equity strategy based on the set of partners and leaders they work with, based on the business, kind of business practices and sets of relationships and the industries that we impact. And so, there was kind of a deepening of the racial equity strategy that went to, you know, how would a waste and recycling-based sector approach racial equity and delivering equity in the region? And how is that different or similar to what the Oregon Zoo does? So, it really allowed for innovation, it allowed for creativity, and allowed for a broader set of partners to help shape how that particular department was able to deliver on racial equity. I think another big milestone for us, and it took years to do this, right? We passed the racial equity strategy in 2016, but really it took us till 2021 to fully adopt a racial equity framework. And so, that became the tool, you know, you know how you have like good project management training and the essentials, essentials of project management? Well, we actually developed a racial equity framework in Metro that helped shape how staff will, in their programs and practices, in their projects, in, you know, make sure that we are applying a racial equity lens to the work we're doing. And this isn't just the checklist. I mean, you could Google right now racial equity frameworks, and you'll come up with 100 questions. And, you know, this is actually a decision-making tool. Because if you ask the questions of who are the most impacted, who are the most burdened, who can benefit the most, then there must be an action plan followed it, followed to address those gaps and address those needs in your project. So, this is really a decision-making framework. And what we've tried to do is tee up all of those decisions with the rationale of doing the work behind them. So, our councillors, like Councillor Craddock, can see that work. And when they're making the ultimate decisions on where to invest and how to set standards, policies to pass, projects to support, that they understand the racial equity impacts of those decisions. And the community also has an upfront and transparent way to understand how we're making those decisions. And sometimes those decisions might not fully actualize all those racial equity outcomes, but at least we have a transparent process to communicate with the community of how we will continue to improve and do better. We also, from that work, begat more work, right? We do more. And this year, we launched a fully comprehensive racial equity budget equity tool. So, now we have every department and venue as part of our budget process going through their own internal work to assess how is their budget supporting equity outcomes and initiatives that they set forward for themselves. So, we will be going into tier two of, or version two of this this year. But essentially, we fully involved our finance department, our, you know, our finance managers to help us understand how are those dollars being assessed compared to the equity outcomes that departments and venues are aiming for. And through all of this work, I think, you know, you talk about community engagement. Part of the strategic plan was to establish a Committee on Racial Equity, which is made up of community members across the three counties and jurisdictions. We have this Committee on Racial Equity working today. They advise Metro Council on how are we applying the strategic plan to those projects, to those goals, and again, weaving that accountability. This is a committee that now is written into Metro Code. It is a standing committee that operates at that level of a partner with Metro Council to make sure at least there's an outside, you know, view of community on how are we doing on our projects and investments. And we have an internal racial equity team, right? So, every department and venue has staff that is helping to mobilize and move this work. Well, guess what? There's a lot of synergies. There's a lot of overlap. And our goal is not to reinvent the wheel. Our goal is to be efficient and effective and learn from each other and have a community of practice inside the agency, because we're all kind of in it together. And honestly, there's no roadmap. I'm telling you what we did. You're going to create your own roadmap. It's not a cookie cutter model, because this work is iterative and meaningful. I think all of this work really comes down to some strategies that we took early on. One was we centered our work on delivering on equity, on delivering, having a focus of using the racial equity lens to deliver on equity. One of the things that we know about our region is that race, at all levels, at every measure, that your race determines your outcomes in our region. And that if we don't talk about race and we don't talk about racism and all of those racial rules that undergird our society, that we're never fully understanding what is operationalizing to create inequities in our region. And so, we said, let's go for it. Let's go into it. Let's talk about it. Let's unpack it so we can get into the deep and most deep and pervasive challenges that we are facing in our region. I think the other piece that we are, that's my little timer, tell me I'm going to slow, finish up. I think the other piece that I want to raise for you, our next iteration of our work is really going deeper into this concept and this strategy called targeted universalism. And really, what that means is that we know as a government, as your government, as us, we know that we are built to deliver on universal good, universal goals that are going to benefit our region. And we also know that different groups of people, depending on their history, depending on the racial rules that we have established in our country, have different paths to get to that universal goal, that some are ahead and some have been held back for so long. And so, we have targeted strategies to break through for each group, depending on the barriers that were created for them. And I think for us at Metro, that's the next iteration of our work, is how do we show the region that engaging and using targeted strategies to help different groups of people achieve the universal goals that we all desire in government, that those require different investments, different strategies, and different ways of doing business. And so, that's what we're excited to get into that next level of journey. And I didn't talk as much about some of the internal work we've done. We have a whole kind of set, using this racial equity strategy to really develop an intensive intentionality of creating. an intensive uh intentionality of creating belonging in our work site, in our workplace, where we want our employees to feel that they can bring their identities and their skills and their lived experience and have it be valuable and and honored in our workplace. So we are building a lot of work to create policies, to create that sense of belonging. And then externally, I ha- I cannot leave here with this pulpit without talking about our construction careers pathways project. As I understand it, you have millions of dollars worth of investments in how you are building resiliency in this region. And this construction careers pathways project is really, how can you utilize those dollars to create quality careers for workers of color and women in the skilled trades professions? Those that will be working on your projects for for generations to come. And so we really think that that's a direct benefit um that goes beyond, you know, the contracting piece is one piece of it, but we're all drawing from the same workers. We're all drawing from a workforce that is the, one of the last middle class, you know, middle class uh family sustaining careers in our region. And we need to invest more to make sure that black, brown workers, women, indigenous workers are able to enter into those fields and build lifelong careers. So um I could talk more, take questions, I know, I just want to talk for ten minutes and then I'll open it up.
Thank you.
I don't know if you're doing questions now or we're just going to the next.
Let's go ahead and have Amber talk and then we'll open it up for some discussion.
And so good to be here with Amber, it's awesome.
Thank you, Rahi, that was terrific. Amber, are you ready?
Yep. Um, so, uh, hi, everyone, it's good to see you again. Um, so I want to talk to you um from a national perspective. Um, we talked a little bit about this uh over last couple of meetings. Um, but I want to talk about what the work that you're going to do with Eco Northwest and how you build a coalition. So at TriMet, uh, I built a coalition for TriMet around their payroll taxing authority. I've worked on one presidential campaign and several statewide uh campaigns since some local races in Oregon. So I come from a, and I'm a former lobbyist. So I come from a different background and I want you to think of it this way. How do you use equity as a tactic as it relates to um the revenue generation? So that's what I want you to think about. And I completely agree with Rahi's point around creating a plan. And I'm not going to steal Jim's thunder, I'm going to talk a little bit about it uh later, which is the programming that he is going to do around the Equity Action Plan is the, is the, the work that is going to enable him to leverage the coalition building. Okay, so let me tell you about three different agencies that that thought about this in the same way. So TriMet, BART, and Met Council, which is a MPO in Minneapolis. So TriMet, um, when I worked for TriMet, we built a payroll taxing authority by creating a coalition of um minority contractors and women owned firms, as well as leaders of color in the region around projects, around mega projects. And so you can form a coalition around the types of work that y'all are going to propose in your programming. And this, and then the other thing that we did is we then took it out on a roadshow with with those same leaders. So BART in uh California, one, one of their largest transit agency. Um, so they had a a mega project that they almost lost seven hundred and fifty million dollars in funding for a mega project. So they also developed a coalition comprised of DBEs, uh workforce providers in unions to get that project back on track just to ensure that the federal funding match. And they launched a campaign and got it back on track. Met Council, the uh MPO in Minneapolis. So they had a uh a light rail project that um had a shortfall of fifteen million dollars for for three stations um that had not been included in the initial project. And their coalition was fabulous. So they had nonprofits that um that were along the alignment. They had um DBEs. They had the University of Minnesota uh was also part of the coalition. And they were able to come together and advocate for the project to get fifteen million dollars. So, so how do you do that? Well, I'm just gonna say a few little things and and I know Jim is gonna go into this, so I won't talk in in depth or in specificity, but think of it this way. Equity is one of the ways that ties back to flood safety, to culture, and to economic parity, the point that Rahi raised. In which case, it does it through creating a coalition of around small business opportunities and also for nonprofits, because nonprofits will likely bid on your work also. And the program can also include an apprenticeship program for high school students and discuss watershed and cultural history. I know that's something that y'all are interested in. And also an indigenous traditional food showcase. And you can engage elderly and disabled and low income populations on the flood impacts. So it's another way to engage the population that uh Counselor Kincaid was interested in. So this coalition comprised of the type of people that will benefit from the programming can leverage the coalition, create the re- relationships, and depend on the way that you create the programming creates mut- mutual beneficial for for you and for the community. That's how you build a coalition. And then that coalition can help with the funding um related to the work you're going to do with Eco Northwest. So I'm going to close because I'm sure there are a lot of questions that you'd like to ask Rahi. Jim?
Thank you, Amber. Um, I think best practice here will be for me to hit very briefly your staff's current best thinking and then let's open it up to questions. I promise I can do this in just a couple of minutes. And then I think it will uh give you a chance to ask our um guest experts a few questions based on where your staff is going. So if that's all right with you, and if Rahi, you have a few more minutes, that would be great. Um, Wendy, could you go to the next slide? So it's slide seven. Do six if you want, because it's cute, but it's not necessary. So you may remember last time we said, so what does this look like for us? Okay, next slide. So here's what it looks like, at least uh according to your staff's current best thinking. There are four critical areas that the scenarios that we are going to present to you in the fall will incorporate. The first is y'all are going to raise taxes. And so we know and we've heard from many of you through our conversations around the draft equity framework that you're interested in talking about whether or not there's a low income program to minimize impacts on people for whom these new charges could be very difficult. So that's very important for you. As you're increasing the amount of revenue that we need to function effectively, think about how it impacts low income folks. Number one, you'll see recommendations around that. Number two, we've touched on this a little bit. We need a framework to make our contracting more diverse in our procurement systems, uh, more effective at removing barriers for small and emerging and minority owned businesses. And I think Rahi raises a really important point, that the workforce benefit that we can have through the hundred to two hundred million dollars in capital spending we'll be doing over the next few years is incredibly significant to bringing new people into the workforce, providing family wage jobs, and ensuring that our work sites are welcoming and safe for all kinds of people, including women. That's a lot of work, but I think we have a leadership opportunity to do that. A third area that's very important to me, and I think Rahi could touch more on this, some of the excellent work that Metro's done, but it's really around community engagement. We're not going to make a dent in some of this work until people understand who we are and what we're doing and they're able to effectively participate in our governance and in our work and in the employment and contracting opportunities that we have. So what you will see from your staff this fall is a range of recommendations for improving our ability to engage, in particular, uh nonprofits and community based organizations that work with communities we don't hear from currently. So those are going to be low income and communities of color uh that we honestly, in my assessment, have not made a priority of engaging. So we want to partner with them, they have those relationships. Uh, they know what their communities need and and we need to give them the resources to help us uh invest in them. And then fourth, Rahi touched on on Metro's Committee on Racial Equity. I think it's very critical that the either interim board or the elected board establish a accountability mechanism that includes some community based oversight. I think it's good for all of us to have that independent objective view. It also strengthens the relationships and trust that we have with the community. So again, there are really four areas that your staff recommendations this fall are going to be focusing on. Again, limiting the impact on low income people of these new charges that we need to levy in order to keep our levies safe, no pun intended. Two, we want to expand the number of people that we hire and the workforce that we engage in the capital program and other work that we do. Third, we want to really boost our partnerships with community based organizations that have trusted relationships with people that we've not heard from and people who face greater barriers than some of us at this table. And finally, we want to have some oversight and accountability uh both for your staff and for the board candidly uh to ensure that we're making progress and that people in the community have a chance to give us input on that. Those are the strategies that you will see reflected in the revenue scenarios that we will prepare for you by fall. And I wanted to give you that big picture. And again, it's the interim board's job to provide the overall revenue necessary to advance the mandates and the legislation that created the urban district. The elected board will approve a specific budget with specific amounts and specific projects that will be implemented. Okay, so what we're asking from you is the broad level leadership and ensuring that your initial revenue package has sufficient capacity in it to make good on the mandates that the legislature provided for us. So that's the end of my presentation and I'd like to open it up for questions for Rahi and Amber. And then we're going to go into some breakout groups for you guys to discuss our current best thinking and the strategy.
And just to clarify and and um for the sake of time, if you have board comments, please save those for the breakout groups. Now is the time for just clarifying questions um of our presenters, so I'll open it up now. Nancy?
Hi, um, Rahi, thank you so much for the presentation and and Amber as well. I have a question for Rahi around the Metro um work that you've been doing. I was following along a little bit um on the website. Uh, it does sound pretty exciting. Have, so two questions really. One, as you engage with the um up till now, uh, underrepresented communities, do you have ways of um paying them for that engagement? Um, because it is their time. And number two, when you measure how well you're doing, do you have um like outcome, like who's better off, kind of outcome metrics? And if so, how'd you do that?
Both, um, excellent, excellent questions. Uh, so yes, we have um some set policies around community engagement. We have a commu- a huge community engagement staff um at Metro. And over time, you know, as this racial equity strategy was continuing to be implemented, we realized that we are drawing more and more and more on the expertise of our community partners, our community based organizations, community members. And yet, we weren't really thinking of them as experts in their own experience or in their neighborhoods and knowledge. And so we weren't compensating. And we had to really fix that, right? Because we would pay other people, you know, who are, you know, experts at different things um for their time and expertise. And so we do actually have a a guidance document um and a practice now. Uh, I wouldn't say it's a hundred percent across the agency, unfortunately. And so we are going to be really pushing it to making it an actual policy. But we really are, uh, we compensate folks at different levels depending on their expertise. We partner with community based organizations more formally and have had uh pretty good success of um shifting our procurement rules to make it easier to work with our partners and do direct award on key things. And our racial equity strategy as a tool embeds the need to partner with community around our programs and practices. So you can't just say, well, here's the people I think are impacted and here's the ways I'm gonna like, you know, research it on my own. No, it's gonna have to be test your theories and work with communities who are most impacted. Well, that means also being able to compensate them. So we have a guidance document that I can also share with you all, um, but we'll be updating it and and making it more formalized. And I think this year in our budget process, as as our DEI program, we may be directing departments to make sure they have money set aside in their in their budgets to to do that. Uh, the second piece of your question, absolutely, right? It's about measurement, tracking. How do we know we are making an impact because we want to make an impact, right? And so this year, we have engaged, we have about eighty staff and community members engaged in a results based accountability training with an anti racist lens. It's what the city of Portland um has been doing in the last year. And we are now in that process, we're going to do a train the trainer. So by the end of the year, we will have teams within departments and venues utilizing the results based accountability uh methodology to assess our impact. And we want to continue to show that to our council who are investing in these efforts um and to find out where, you know, ultimately, what I've been excited about is the process involves understanding the root causes of inequities, the root causes of the problems in our region and our country, and using that lens of like, okay, then what's Metro's kind of impact on those root causes? And being able to assess from community conditions as opposed to our own assumptions about what is important or not. So we'll be doing a lot of learning and we're excited to, I think we're making progress, but you know, I'm just the DI director, like, we want a real proof that we are.
Thank you. Let's uh see two hands up, we'll go Eric and then we'll go Mary Helen.
Uh, yeah, so Rahi, question for you, uh, twofold. First, when you have outreach, does this include neighborhood based organizations as well as community based organizations?
Our community engagement team does have a wider portfolio of communities that are, you know, involved in metro decisions. And I think where we have been really, um, you know, and our community engagement team are looking at, who are the people that are often not at the table? Who's missing in these places? Um, who have maybe more distrust of government? And so we have to spend a more time building relationships. Um, I mean, what are we inheriting in this region? We are inheriting an infrastructure, a government infrastructure that has divested from these communities that when you think on any given day, who's well funded in philanthropy and who's not? I mean, we're looking at historic kind of conditions. And so for us, it's like both, all of the stakeholders that are impacted by a particular decision and then where are our investments going to make sure the people that are missing? That's the strategies, that's the targeted strategies that we have. Um, so I don't know if that answers uh your question.
Yeah, not quite, but uh let's go on to the second part of that question.
Is there something else I can, I can?
Yeah, so. For an example of how you had worked with a neighborhood based organization um that was in a butter to a a major project and engaged the community that way.
Based on their neighborhood, so as opposed to a community based organization based on identity? Is that what you mean? Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess we're, what I'm trying to say is that we do both. And the, I think the, what, what's, what's important is to look at who's missing. Uh, so I'll give you an example. Uh, like I said, I was involved in the Powell Division project. And at that time, the Asian Pacific American Network of Oregon, upon O had two staff. And they were just beginning to do work in the Jade District. They had just begun that project before. They were a statewide organization that focused on Asian Pacific Islanders around civic engagement. And so it was actually that partnership with Metro, the first partnership of resource there was helping that group stipend, community members to participate in some visioning uh charrettes and different ideas around kind of what, what would that? and different ideas around kind of what, what would that 82nd Division, you know, kind of where those buses were and where people wave. It was like the highest use like bus route in the city. So it started really small. It started as like stipends for direct community members to come and participate in an afternoon session. And then over time, it grew to much more engaged. Because at that time, there wasn't really a large organization or anything that was working with those community members. So I think it's really about what do people need, who's missing, and then fitting the funding strategy to fill those gaps.
I think the answer really is it's a yes and. So for example, we have a pretty good relationship with, well, good might be stretched, but we have a relationship with Bridgeton, Fairview, and some of the other neighborhoods. And what we don't have is strong relationships with some of those other communities. And so you'll see a robust package that includes both of those. But what we're presenting today is around a brand-new mandate around equity and where we have gaps, and where we have gaps is in some of these community-based organizations, serving communities that we typically haven't heard from in our first 100 years of business.
My turn?
Yep, go ahead, Mary Helen.
Okay. Eric's question and your answer is kind of danced around all of my concerns that have always been, how do we find the people and identify and involve them on their terms in providing information? People tend to react only to negative occurrences in my experience. And so I don't want to cause a negative occurrence and have it all have to happen after the flood. I was witness to the, I'm going to just say circus of 1986, when everybody stood around and pointed at the next person in the line, and a woman came running out of the mobile home park saying, I don't want to drown. I don't want to drown. And so how do we find those people and inform them how they're going to be helped, what the resources are? And if that's in your guidance documents and formulation, I'd really enjoy reading those.
That's, that's some powerful, powerful experiences. I don't know, Amber, did you want to say something? I have, I can share some perspective, but.
Sure. So I guess I'd just like to offer, offer this, that some of the questions that you're, that both the counselors asked is part of the work that we will be doing with Jim and the team on developing the Equity Action Plan. Because the Action Plan helps develop the who, what, where, and when. And it starts with the analysis, the demographic analysis, and the, the analysis of the population for whom, you know, y'all oversee. And then it develops the strategies and the tactics for how to engage them, et cetera. So y'all are getting into the very, the very real details that we will be working on with Jim later after y'all approve the, the Action Plan. But I highly recommend that you keep, keep asking these high, higher, high-level policy questions and so that we can help the team in terms of the implementation strategy.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And then I would just, I would just echo that this is about a long-term strategy and not short-term. That you will see, I'm sure this woman in the, in the trailer home park has probably seen over her lifetime numerous government decisions that have impacted her negatively. And what we are trying to do is make a different shift in what you're trying to do. And I think where we see it as long-term relationship building with communities over time, where that trust could be built back, where there's different sets of experiences that get to be put in place, and where they can, people can see their, their hopes actually reflected in the decisions you're making. And what, you know, we, we continue to be on that journey in Metro. I would not say that everybody of, especially of those marginalized communities, trust Metro and like, we're in this great place. Like, it is a constant work. And we have to keep consistent policies and consistent engagement so folks can build that trust with us.
Well, thank you, because that trust is what came out. And I don't want to repeat all the things that she said about government. And the realization came to me then and stayed with me since then of how do you make, how do you allow somebody to trust you if the wrong things happen? And so I think that's going to be important in what we do.
Absolutely.
And Rahi, if I may, remember, Kinkade has been very concerned, and I think rightfully so, that when we're forming these partnerships, there has to be some sort of a transparent procedure for which organizations get selected. And I think that's underlying her question, and I think it's a very important one, because if you blow it at first, it's really hard to make up that lost trust. Could you say a little bit about how Metro's gone about selecting various organizations that you've partnered with? Am I helping you, Mary Helen? Is that sort of underneath your question?
I'm kind of chuck, I'm kind of chuckling because you phrased it very nicely, but thank you. No, I've always just wondered how people got picked or, and I don't need to know the how, but. Well, maybe the how, because other people, you know, Eric Molander or other board members will have different connections that they might think are applicable that could feed into the situation. But I don't know how to use that information or how it could be helpful to staff. And so that's why I raised the question about what if or who or are we really asking the people we should be asking? Did we ask anybody in Delta Park, Delta, Delta Wood? You know, I don't know those things, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think one of the, one of the benefits of our racial equity framework, and I'll share all of these materials with Jim. One of the first questions, you know, the first question is, what is the goal of this project, right? Like, what's the universal goal? What is it we're trying to achieve? And the second question is, you know, what do we know about who is, who is impacted, who benefits, who is burdened by the decisions that we'll make on this project? And I think to me, that question of the who, and then the next following question is, where are they in this process? Have we engaged any of the folks, especially if the decisions are going to burden them or have potential for burden? Have, do we have any way to engage those communities? And so I always tell people that in equity work, we have to show our work. We can't shorthand, oh, well, of course, it's these groups and that. We have to show, how do we know? What is the why? What is the research? How do we understand the, the complexity of a problem? And what have we done to learn from the community? And so it naturally progresses to who's at this table right now? Like, who can you pick up the phone and engage with? And who is going to take a little bit more effort and time because of that trust, because of that disenfranchisement, to put some more resources toward bringing them in? So I think it's about really every situation is different. But if you're asking the questions and you're going a layer deeper, then who shows up to who needs to show up because it's going to impact their lives and they're not here? I think that's kind of, you know, where, what I was trying to get at is like, everything has a different strategy. And for us, what we know is we're working up against history, right? We're working up against many, many years of disenfranchisement of groups that don't have, you know, the resources to play at the level you need them to play in order to make decisions. Right? And so that's where our work comes in. We've invested, we have, we started a project with Jim's help back two years ago, a capacity building program for our community-based organizations. It's a pilot project at Metro. It's a three-year funding cycle. We selected, you know, through applications, five organizations across the three counties, that their job is to engage community leaders on the ground and develop leaders so they could participate in Metro decisions and, and programs at a level that they can serve on those committees. You know, they can come to meetings and speak to what their community needs. And so we're investing in groups to help grow that set of leaders, especially in places that don't necessarily have the investment. And so we're excited for the potential of that and maybe even to influence some of your, your work and in the places you're going to be investing in.
Thank you so much, Rahi, for your knowledge and information. Thank you, Amber, for your comments. Given that we're after, we're about 3:35, and we need to do our breakout sessions. And we do, I think, want some time at the end to get back together and kind of wrap things up before the four o'clock legislative open house. I think we're needing to break into our sessions now. Thank you so much again.
Thank you. And I'll definitely share materials, and please call on us anytime for anything else we can do to, to support your work.
Well, thank you both, Rahi and Amber, for your expertise. And I want to remind you, could you pull up that question slide? It's in the chat. So, okay. So just a few things for you to recall that we're, we're asking you to consider. And again, wherever this conversation goes from among the board members is fine, but we're really interested in that, what's this look like? The areas that we highlighted for you, of those, what really resonates for you? Are there additional strategies based on what you've heard today or that you're thinking about that we need to be considering before we present to you some draft revenue scenarios? What are your concerns about the strategies we've highlighted or the gaps that you've learned about? And back to, I think, our fundamental goal, which is to build a, a community that's willing to support the investments we need to make to ensure that we are protected from flooding and that we embody both the spirit and letter of the legislative mandate of the new district. So those are the questions that we'd like you to consider, and we will have staff in each of the rooms to help facilitate. We'd love you to stay focused on those questions and give us feedback. Because again, we really want your direction so that the scenarios that we bring to you in the fall are in the realm of what you all are expecting. So thank you for that.
And we are going to come back together as a group about 3:00, 3:50. So we don't have the full 30 minutes, but so use your time wisely. I think we're going to restructure the groups too, aren't we, Wendy? So that this is one breakout. Okay.
And then I'll go ahead and send staff into a different breakout room if you want to go in there to chat, or you can stay in here. Just know that we're not going to be able to have you doing any chatting in this room because we're meeting in here. So the breakout rooms are open now.
Then we'll close with a quick overview of next steps on the framework and the beginnings of the development of the action strategy. So, okay. I think we can push people.
All right, is everybody back? Not quite, almost? Welcome back. I think hopefully you had a lively discussion like we did. It was very beneficial. We're, we don't have time to do report outs from each group. We'll follow up later on that, but Jim is going to talk about next steps.
Okay, thank you all. I want you to know, I got a little bit of conflicting feedback. Some people liked the report out. Some people wanted to use the time for discussion. Because we have the legislators coming, we hope, we're not going to do the full report out. But my commitment is staff's going to capture everything and we'll share the notes for all the groups with all of you so that you know, and there'll be some future opportunities for discussion. My job here is to close with a sense of next steps. So my hope is that all of you will have sent us some comments on the equity framework. Working with Ontiveros and Associates, we will polish that up and incorporate your changes. Where we have conflicts in recommendations, we'll highlight those and share them with you. My objective will be to bring you a final framework during September and ideally get that adopted. And then I feel like that gives us really strong guidance for the development of the initial recommendations that we'll make to you. And then we'll also use that as the basis for the development of an interim action plan. And we'll be partnering with Ontiveros and Associates to create that work program. And we'll share that work program with the board before we institute it. And we'll also create some opportunities for board involvement in the action strategy development. Ultimately, though, we'll have some guidance as we develop your revenue scenarios. And what I heard, at least in this group, was really valuable for me and for the entire staff that when we bring you these scenarios, hopefully in October, you'll, you'll see your hands on them, and there'll be different levels of investment. So again, that was a little muddled. Give me your comments by the end of today on the framework. If you need a little bit more time, just let me know, right? We don't, this is an artificial deadline, but I do want to keep some pressure to keep this work moving. We'll get back to you in time for your regular September meeting with a final document for your final review and hopefully approval. And then based on that approval, we will incorporate your guidance into the revenue scenarios that we present in the fall, and we're going to get started right away on the development of an agency-wide and department-specific equity action program that will come back to you as a board, both for your interim budget and to inform the overall scenarios. Does that make any sense?
Jim, I just want to clarify, you want anything comments beyond what we made in the breakout sessions? Because everything I would comment to you, I expressed in the breakout session.
Then we'll, we'll have that captured. You don't need to do anything different if there are specific edits or comments on the equity framework document. That's what we're looking for. And this, the broader discussion about the equity strategy and the revenues will be factored into our next steps as we bring you the revenue scenarios this fall.
Okay.
Okay, thanks for asking. Any questions about next steps? I think we might be done early. Oh, my gosh.
That's amazing. We thought we were going to be done late, but we do have at least one legislator here. It's 3:56. Any other business to come before the board? Hearing none. This meeting is closed. Thank you all.
On behalf of your staff, thank you guys for being here today and for your help with this important work. We appreciate you.